Couple minutes past six. And, um. It's a reminder, this is a public meeting, it's being video and auto- audio recorded for future cable broadcasts and internet posting on www.dighton-mass.gov. And it also ends up on YouTube, I believe, so. Um, be nice. And if everybody wouldn't mind standing.
If you'd like to lead us to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Who wants the public input? Thomas, I think you have some public input for us.
Sure. As you know, today, our mass recycling group that we belong with has a informational meeting once a, once a quarter, they try to target, they alternate between Middle Bowl and Rentham. Today's had some very important guest speakers. And for various reasons, we couldn't have some key people, like the Board of Health members or former Slutman. So I was designated to try to make it down, I did.
Thank you. Did you bring back any handouts?
Uh, not for you guys.
Okay.
The handouts I brought back were for keeping Massachusetts beautiful. People are really excited about picking up there. It involves Board of Health, that's in all the roadside stuff. Uh, so we had a, the two important people that you know on some of the reporting is John Fisher from DEP, Brooke Nash. He has some very important thing, uh, Mr. Fisher was elaborating on debris cleanup after disasters. And how that may affect Board of Health and also our local disaster committee is reviewing and having your HAZ plan in place. And that's what I learned today was key is usually on your reembessments and your FEMA reembessments, it's seventy-five, twenty-five. You have that in place, you can get a lot more. Yeah, so your contribution might not be twenty-five, it could be less. The other thing is the sites where it's very important that they're public sites, not sites like Park and Lot said, it's not public property, that really complicates things. So you should have sites designated, those are the take home points I brought. I mean, I know in the past, this field was one of them for debris collection. It's very important to isolate it, and it involves the Board of Health, because what's going where, you need to know. So those things need to be revisited, both on the Board of Health level and the Disaster Committee, or maybe, I believe there's a Board of Health member on that committee, right? The Disaster Committee is third, so maybe we can go that route and that person can report back to their board. And as far as recycling, uh, the round, there was a short roundtable, they were hoping to have it long, about the payments increase on recyclable problems. Not much to share in that, except for there are more than a half a dozen glass plants almost in operation in Mass coming soon, some within months, some years out. That's gonna help, because there's, there's gonna be a market there, so that's gonna help on that part. And the big take home from Mrs. Nash, on the contaminated recyclers, uh, there is a new, on their website, there's a new link about the don'ts, you know, the
Mm-hmm.
what's supposed to go in recycling, and what can and can't.
No pizza.
You can grab that, there's a way to do it, if you've got a way to get onto the portal, and if you need help, just contact her, she'll help you through it. You can copy paste, put that active link on our own website.
That'd be good.
And, um, what happens when you do that, when there's an upgrade and whatnot, it automatically happens. So, like, no more, if they don't want no more car bumpers in their recycling bin, they can.
Now, what's that word, SEMRC?
Yes, yes, that's true that.
SEMRC, right?
Mrs. Nash is for the DEP.
Okay.
Yeah, she helps create the policies and stuff like that, but, uh, there was someone on there who had worked very well on that website creation.
Now, these things, I think, are also video recorded for accessibility for the Boards of Health?
Uh, today, no, it wasn't.
Oh, it wasn't?
No. Mr. Nash's, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Fisher's presentation, it's a slide presentation, you can grab that through the minutes. The minutes should be emailed, if you guys already have any emails, those should be emailed, and those links to help get that website stuff will be on there. And like I said, she'll help you with that, so good head up on that.
I was hoping to go ahead of conflict, I was scheduling.
Same here.
Yeah.
So those are, those are the take home points, it is informative as usual. I believe the next one's gonna be in Middle Bowl.
What's the date of the next one?
I, I don't have it with me right now.
And while Tom's here, we already kind of discussed the, uh, the same thing, but with Richard Plastic.
Yes.
And, uh, it was kind of decided, well, discussed that the market's really not that good right now, and that we just monitor closely for those grants and stuff in the future.
Yeah, I, I, before you get committed, because once when you're committed with that, you have, it's part of your reporting. So, um, I suggest we don't go that route yet.
You can monitor closely, see if things change over time. That was just something we discussed offline.
Right. Okay?
I think the FEMA reimbursement reimbursement is probably, uh, one of the big things we should look at, uh, for seventy-five, twenty-five, you said we want to involve with that.
Oh, yeah, I mean, even if we, our contribution was twenty-five percent of a major disaster, that's a big deal for our town.
Yeah. It's like five hurricanes out there.
That's a big deal that you don't plan for, right?
Yeah, so.
So if you have things in place and it's, it ain't gonna hurt as much, it makes sense to have things in place.
Okay.
And I didn't know about the private property part, we don't want to designate areas private property, last you have, the last key scenario. Those are some of the things that cover the last key scenarios.
All right, Tom.
Okay?
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Tom?
I'm sure as we look into it a little more, we'll probably have some questions.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Public input?
Moving on to five A?
We have additional agendas that some people will know what we're doing up there. Everybody can pass around, these are the agendas for the CRO. Sorry we didn't get around.
So the next order on the new business is, uh, variance, septic variance request for one sixty Main Street. Have you seen this yet?
Okay, so the record, I'm Greg Nichols, a septic engineer, representing R and M Industries, property of one sixty Main Street. Um, what we have here is an existing three bedroom home.
Yeah.
We can be.
Okay, all right.
I don't see a plan, yeah.
Yeah, I'll take a plan.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have an existing three bedroom home, being serviced by a cesspool and an overflow cesspool. Both of these are well on a water table, full of water. So we're proposing for a repaired system, a repaired system, it's going to be a Presby, just shown here. And it's designed to handle the flow, we do have resource area in the back, which is going to conservation in a few hours to address conservation issues. There is a BBW back here, the entire parcel, or the area which we're gonna be doing a repair, is in a buffer zone, we're in a floodplain. But we also have, in addition to the conservation issues, we also have a few variances that we're requesting, and one of which directly affects the abutis here at one fifty Main Street, which is Mr. Solia, and that's going to be the setback to the sideline, which is required by Title V to ten feet, we're showing five point eight, five point nine respectively. In addition to that, the setbacks from the septic tank, which is supposed to be ten feet, six point six feet, and two other ones which aren't specific variances in a common central variance. A recommendation of Title V to set back the breakout barrier ten feet from the edge of the system. In this case, we're going five feet because of the psych constraints, if I was to do that, it would leave somebody else's property, I can't, I can't do that. And also with the Presby system, because I'm able to maintain the fifty feet from the wetland, afforded the two foot separation of groundwater, lowers the system considerably, as far as the existing topography goes. So although it's a by right, if you will, I can use that word, approval of the Presby, DEP approval, it's still vary, uh, vary from Title V to four feet, so that's just in the plan as well. The existing elevation here, it's something that Mr., so we had questions about, it's seven, it's six, coming around a corner. The top of the system will be at seven feet, so it's not a considerable increase in the existing grade. The flow will still be going in this direction toward the wetland. And there's a low point between the property line, which comes this way, it's not gonna be a big mountain. So that's pretty much what I had from the view of the system.
What's the distance from the, the end of the leaching field to the BBW?
Fifty-three point eight.
I don't know if it matters, but there's no house over here now, right, isn't there?
No, that's my house.
Well, you own this, this is all your property.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's the vacant lot, it's the one.
The vacant lot's for.
It's on the other side.
Okay.
So the, was it just?
There was nobody to notify then, it was just?
And who's on this?
He's on here.
It was only the property that was affected by the waiver that was notified.
Yeah, my, my only concern was I wanted to make sure that the drain water was not gonna go towards my cellar, because I have a dirt cellar. I want, I wanted to make sure that nothing's going to be flowing that way.
I don't feel that the, uh, the change in the runoff over here, and even though it's such a small model, it's talking to every right here. I mean, your house is actually further up, with the existing houses, it's over here somewhere, is that correct?
I'm up in, well, the house is up here, right?
This is the, this is the existing house right here.
Oh, that's, yeah, okay, so, so I'm, I'm like that, like, over here somewhere.
Yeah, so you're actually needing to use the grade.
Be close to the back of their house.
We're running down this way, they're running this way. This area from here to here will be going here, but it's a low point, this is where the, well, where your tree line actually starts in this area. So it's gonna be going back toward the wetland.
You're going two and a half feet higher than existing grade now?
At, at the, at the worst case scenario.
Right, 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 right.
In the front, it's.
Does only two and a half feet high in groundwater over there now?
Yeah, right here, actually in the front, you're actually closer to a, excuse me, closer to a foot higher.
Now, just gonna tape, just gonna taper off towards my land, or are they gonna have a, uh, area like.
Retaining wall?
Wall, retaining.
There won't be any retaining wall, but you do have a low point over here. It's gonna taper off at a distance of about five feet from, be a foot high where Roslin's sitting, and then it's gonna actually exist in ground here. And so it's gonna act, you know, it'll flow.
Slight tape.
Yeah. I apologize.
No need for a poly barrier over there then, on the edge of there?
Yeah, but, well, he's got a.
Yeah, around here there was.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, it, it doesn't show up all that well, but it, it is all the way around, so.
Okay, well, is that, and now, to eliminate any more, um, variances, is there any way you can kind of, can you shift that thing?
If I do that, probably it's gonna be, how's the pipe gonna come out, we clean, bend in the pipe to our house. So, which I don't.
Could you put the D box on the other end of the system?
Then if you're shifting this whole thing over to the other side, I'm not sure that you're gonna gain anything that way, the, your system over here, ten feet to the D box, or ten point one, is my limit on the other side.
D box doesn't have to be ten feet from a property line?
Uh, it's not a system component, my understanding of it.
It was.
That's all been my interpretation, Tom.
It's not part of the SAS, but this is one of the things we're looking to correct.
We're gonna add it.
We're gonna add it.
No matter how you do it, you're still gonna have the system too close. The only other thing is to change this tank around, feed it the other way.
I always like to eliminate if you can, you know, sometimes you.
Yeah, we did reconfigure this.
You're gonna put the pump chamber in the, in the sand over there, though, right? You can slide the tank and the pump chambers three feet further out from the house?
I'm just saying it's something to look at or consider, just to eliminate any more variances to, it looks like you have a little bit of room, that's why.
Uh, yeah, it would be, it would be close, I could try it, see if it works, if you want.
And over here, it's kind of, it's tough on the field.
Yeah, it's not, it's not gonna work, it's not gonna work.
And, but you did put the barrier there, so.
Right.
At least, and it's a new, it's a new system versus the cesspools.
Mutiful.
So now it's an improvement all around, okay?
Did you have a recommendation?
Yeah, um, I've reviewed the plan and had a bunch of little changes, which he did, all of them. There's not any alternatives on the site for where else to put the system, there's just nowhere else to go. The only thing that is required is a bedroom deed restriction, which he sent over a draft of, and I believe we looked it over already, but we're gonna have to have it recorded before the COC is issued. But other than that, um, it's the best we can do, so.
No, that's, that's not failed yet, right, it's just.
I don't know if he actually ever did a Title V reflection, but the cesspool full of water, and nobody's left here for a while.
It's in groundwater.
Yeah.
Don't.
And how long has that been abandoned, I don't know.
Uh, I think it was, is it on that one?
It's almost a year.
Is that west of you, the house west of you?
Yes.
Who's that, who was that?
It was Mary Ann.
He had it there.
It's Elsouz.
Okay, I haven't been down there.
That's the one that used, it used to be Costa, joint Costa's.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
And then they sold it.
All right. Yeah, I was thinking this was you and this was.
Maybe this is you.
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm the other side.
Is it you over there, okay.
And there's nobody else on, on this one, right?
No, I don't, there is no note on the plan, um, Matt asked if there was a note on the plan about the bedroom deed restriction.
Uh, no, there is not a note on the plan.
Put it on the ASB.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Oh, yeah, well?
Yeah. Just knowing that, uh, the bedrooms.
Same thing with the tank, if we can get it ten feet away, then we can be reflected on.
I don't know if it's something you wanna take a look at and work with, uh, Todd?
Yeah, I'll look at it, and if it's something I can't remove, I'll just make the change.
It's not a big deal to me, not for moving a tank by a few feet.
Okay.
Wait and see what the conservation says, and then you can go from there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions, Mr. Sylvia?
No, I think we're all set.
Well, uh.
I'll make the motion to approve the variances as printed on the, uh, plan here.
Second?
For one sixty Main Street.
Yes.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion?
Uh, just with a note that the deed restriction will be recorded prior to issuing the COC, and it'll also be mentioned on the ASB.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is we will discuss an act on seventy-two Main Street, septic variance request.
How are you, sir?
All right, yourself?
Good, thank you.
For the record, Stevie Roll from Carlin Corp, representing Aspen Properties Investments LLC. Basically, we repaired an existing three bedroom home, another tight site. We've got a button resource area as well as a flood zone. There's also this underground two foot by two foot culvert, um, here, so we can't put the system here, so we're really restricted.
It's an open bottom culvert.
We're really restricted to putting the system here, which is what we did, a three bedroom design. We're using the quick four plus standard low profile chambers. As far as grading goes, we're not really grading a mound here. Um, we are asking for a list of, uh, variances, including setbacks to the existing structure, setbacks to the property line, setback to the wetland resource area. And I believe a reduction to groundwater, to try to minimize any, uh, mileage. We're also proposing the, uh, impervious barrier up against the house, pretty much, it could go all the way around the entire system. Unfortunately, it's just a really tight site.
Put it in the backyard, that's.
Yeah, this, this one's not bad, is it, eight, eight feet towards?
Yep, no, eight point two feet to the
Okay.
property line, yep. We're keeping everything essentially five feet off the foundation. We are almost thirty feet from the abutis' structure. And over fifty.
How close are the wetlands?
Here's a fifty foot buffer, so we're, I mean, the tank is within the fifty foot buffer, but the leaching field is including it.
Well, the tank is, as we discussed, not part of the system, right?
You mean the D box? The tanks.
Oh, that's the tank, yeah, yeah.
That's the tank, D box, yeah, probably. Distribution box, we're, we're about sixty feet.
It's hard to read this way. Is, is that, so this is the abutis?
This is the abutis' house.
All right, so are they, they've been notified?
They have been notified, we did provide a second.
Let's make a show.
They have the notification and the green card, and it was ten days prior to the meeting, so.
Nobody appears, so.
And we haven't received any calls.
Yeah, this office hasn't received calls from anybody either, so. But you have a conservation here too, so you might hear from them now.
Now, how are the soils, where, um, they were saturated, we had to perform a sieve.
It's, um, nine feet down to good material.
That's big, uh.
Five feet off the foundation, yep.
And the road. Any, uh, thoughts on the construction processes we want replaced? With the proximity to the road and the, uh, the foundation?
Um, I mean, we're gonna.
Do it in pieces?
Basically, we've got this portion of the foundation, we're gonna have to pretty much go down to footing, um, maybe even below, I don't know how deep it is. And when it comes to the road, I mean, we are kind of far away here.
Yeah.
Probably an additional, um, maybe eight feet to the edge of pavement, um, with our overdid. But, yeah, I mean, that's really kind of your contractor's responsibility on how they're gonna construct it.
It's just a house just before the fire station, that's.
There's a church here, I believe.
Yeah, and then a fire station.
Yeah, it's a residence, yeah, it's a residence, no, okay.
Okay, there was a church and then a fire station.
Yep, yep, okay, I know where it is.
Mm-hmm.
It's just been renovated too, that home, right?
They've been renovating it, yep.
And what was it originally designed for, the system?
The cesspool.
All right, so it must have been a three bedroom, is it three bedroom now, system?
Mm-hmm.
That's what he's doing now.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things, um, that I'm gonna be looking for is floor plans of the house, because they're doing work inside the house, so we're gonna want floor plans. And because he's asking for separation of water table, we're gonna need a bedroom deed restriction.
Yeah.
Which I haven't seen a draft copy of, but same as the other one, it'll have to be recorded prior to.
Absolutely. Because once you ask, once you ask for this separation, and also to a wetland, there can't be any increase in flow.
Is that on the plan, the deed restriction?
No.
It seems the other one?
Mm-hmm.
Pretty much.
Yeah, I have two other comments, though, uh, number one is you need another waiver, um, from fifteen four oh five I, um, which is the sieve analysis. You didn't ask for that one.
That, that is correct, yeah.
And the other one is, you didn't specify a bottom of the impervious barrier that I could find anywhere on the plan.
Okay.
And in this case, because we're five feet off the foundation, I think it's imperative that we show that the bottom is below the basement floor.
Okay. Yeah. What do you intend to make, make those revisions?
And then you want the bed, bedroom deed restriction note on this and on the ASB, or just?
Uh, just, yeah, ASB, fine.
Okay.
I would put it on this if we're gonna provide you with a revised plan.
Yeah, if you, if you know a revised plan, just put it on there.
Okay.
Again, wait till you go through conservation before you give me a new plan, but.
And you go to conservation tonight as well?
Yeah.
But those are my only comments, again, same as the other one, no other place to put it. I would, I even suggested like an L-shaped system, but that would have put us too close to that underground, that channel that's open on the bottom, and it's intercepting groundwater, and it would have been a bad idea, so.
I want to turn a motion to approve those two conditions, two, right?
Uh, there's a handful there.
Yeah, there's.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, requested variances as printed on the plan.
And then the added one?
Plus the, the other one for the.
Oh, with the addition of the, uh,
The sieve.
variance for the sieve.
Second?
Second. Okay, motion made seconded, uh, all favor?
Okay.
Aye.
Aye, close. Okay.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Love you, good night.
You too.
Good luck with the conservation.
Thank you.
Any conservation? Oh, yeah. It's pretty convenient, you gotta stay for an engineer to do both needs in one night, that is, the systems, yeah.
Yeah, weird.
Because they're, because usually it's opposite nights and everything, and no, it's.
This chick keeps giving up, it's weird.
Did you eat too many Girl Scout cookies?
I know.
I did send you guys, I was already, I don't know if you read it. This is my proposal, or what I think should happen with the leash law, and, uh, the steps we should take. So if the dog is off the property unleashed, even if it's unleashed and under your control, that's not leashed. It needs to be leashed if it's off your property. And if you're on your prop and you have full control of it, and that includes an electric fence, that's considered full control. So if you have an electric fence and your dog runs around the property, that's fine. Once it steps off the property, because it goes through the electric fence, that's a different problem. And.
Unless it has permission to be on somebody else's.
This is property, right. Um, the first time I pick up an animal, if it has a town tag, I will return it to the said house, and you will get a warning. After that, you will, it will start being charged, twenty, it will start at twenty-five and go up to a hundred.
Now, that's what the state.
Yes.
That, that co, uh.
Yes.
Is consistent with the state.
Yes, it is.
Uh, regs that we put in place, okay.
Yes. Um, as long as you have a tag that tells him you have a rabies certificate somewhere, so that's good. If I pick up a dog and it does not have a tag, it will then go to the shelter. I will do everything I can in my po, in my power to find out who the dog belongs to. But before the dog is released to you, you need to have a town tag and a proof of a rabies vaccine. Now, if I pick up your dog on a Friday, you can't do all that, or you can't get a town tag until Monday. So which means the dog will stay over in my shelter Friday night, Saturday night, and Sunday night, which is twenty-five dollars a day, until you get that town tag and rabies vaccine. Now, I have asked one of the local vets if I have dogs that don't have rabies vaccines, because I can't release the dog to you to take it to go get a rabies vaccine, I can't be guaranteed you're gonna come back with it. They will let me come in and just give a rabies vaccine, but that will be at the owner's expense. The owner will have to pay for that rabies vaccine. But that will be done, and then you can take your rabies vaccine, and you can go to the town hall and get your tag. It's really simple. I know there's gonna be people that are gonna be really upset, but it's really simple. I think town tags, hopefully we'll see a spike in that, people getting town tags. Um, and I can return your dog, if nothing else, you know? But always leashed, unless it's on your property or somebody's property that's allowed you to let it leashed, and under your, your control. And under control means you yell and it stops. Not that you yell and it goes, yeah, see ya, and keeps unlocking.
Yeah, like my dog.
So I did find something interesting. And I did send this to you, but everybody says they're having a hard time reading it, so I will. I will read it for everybody. This was in the Rehoboth Reporter. And what Rehoboth does. So. Rehoboth to date has two thousand one hundred and thirteen dogs registered in their town, and twenty-one county licenses. They're still waiting for about sixty-five dogs to license. When they come in at this date, an additional twenty-five late fee will be imposed to the total late, late fee, which now is forty dollars altogether, plus a certified mailing fee along with a noncriminal citation. So what they do is, you know, when we send out all those mailings back, because people haven't come in, they charge them for that. Plus their bill late fees are a lot different than ours, which I think we should start thinking about, especially now that we have a leash law. That if you're not registered by this time, it's a X amount of fee, and if it's not registered by two or three months after that, it's a X amount of fee, and then after that, they, they write a citation, you come get your dog license, you get a citation too, for twenty-five dollars. I know it doesn't sound much, but.
Now, that's the licensing, so that's the, the responsibility of the town clerk, right, town and.
Well, not the, the fees are, I think we tried to talk about fees before, and it sort of got put aside. But the, uh, noncriminal, uh, citation comes from me.
Right, in the end.
Right.
It will come from you.
Right.
And any fees associated with, but it's so, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the fees for all of that are set by the town clerk.
Are they set by the town clerk, or are they?
Well, I think they're set by the town clerk.
By the state, I know. I know this, but are they?
So, if you wanna talk to Sue about, um,
Yep.
what your thoughts are here, um, I mean, it.
And you can ask it too, uh, uh, if there are a lot of late people?
I mean. There are a lot of late people, there are, we just, we send out two mailings. There are a lot of late people, there are. We just, we send out two mailings on top, but uh, uh, you know. We send out one in, I think it's like May or June, and then they just sent out another one. Trying to get people to.
Yeah, they send out, they're actually both regular mail too, so.
Right.
If they were to adopt something like this, would they, with the certified fee and.
Mm-hmm.
But I think she had a good, last time I spoke with her, she had good response. People were calling and saying they no longer have the animal, or.
And that, and that's true too, cause sometimes you don't know that, and you get, and people need to know if you get your census and you're allowed to have that dog,
Right.
that you need to call the town hall and let them know that, so it gets taken off.
Yeah. And, just so everybody's watching here, in case you're wondering how we know you have a dog. Um, if your dog is vaccinated by a veterinarian, and that's also state law. The veterinarian sends us notification that the dog was vaccinated, so. Um, once we get that, we see if it's, they're licensed, and we go from there, so. Um, the, the right thing to do is get the dog vaccinated and licensed, um. God forbid if it was one of your kids, a family member that was bitten by a dog, did not have rabies vaccination. So now you don't know whether you should go through the process of, uh, the rabies prevention, or not. But, um. So, as we're stating, uh, it's pretty simple to do the right thing, and that's all we're asking you to do, so. But, um, question for you, Stacy. Did, did we have the boarding fee, I know when we first did the budget.
We.
And we were charging twenty-five, but i- is that solid in writing now? I'm not sure that it is.
I don't know if we put it in, if it was underneath one of the regs when we were, that was way back.
I know.
I don't know, I'd have to look to see if it's underneath one of the regs.
I don't recall ever making it a reg. Um, but people complied with the few that we had. But I think we should consider it as a, are you gonna check on that?
Yep, I'll check on that.
I don't recall, you might wanna make it a reg, so.
Yep.
Does that twenty-five dollar boarding fee cover heat and food and your time and?
Well, why we made it twenty-five was because I was getting paid twenty-five dollars every time I went to the cow. Or for the day, if I went twice a day, I'd get the twenty-five dollars for that. So that's why we dec- we decided twenty-five. It took care, it didn't make any money for anything, it just took care of me. Now, at this point, I don't get that, so it would, at this point, cover me going there and feeding. Now, depending on what happens upstairs, we could have a new, newer facility, a different facility, so that would be something we'd have to look into. That's something else I have to, I will be going up there, because the state did give me twenty-five dol- twenty-five thousand dollars to update or, um, put into a shelter.
Yeah.
It can't be used for administration fees, shelter or, um, getting equipment to better handle animals, that kinda stuff. So, we're gonna discuss it tonight about the old police station, and, um, see if I'm going to be updating that, or if I'm gonna be updating where I am. So, then we have to put it all on paper and send it to them.
Good. And is that something you applied for, right?
No, it just was some, was it last year or two years ago? It was put in the budget and it was scrapped, it never got voted on. This year it went through myself, there's four other towns in the area that got it, four or five other towns that got twenty-five thousand dollars.
That's pretty standard, right?
Yeah, it was. But this is the first year that I've ever received paperwork, you need to give me a plan on what's happening, so the money's there.
And if all the state departments did that, all of a sudden they had money and ended up to random towns.
Mm.
No, DCR had, had some towns too, they gave money to.
Mm-hmm.
The same thing, they needed a quick plan.
Right, right. So, we'll be discussing that tonight.
Should we consider this as a new reg with our other regs, or? I mean, most of this is.
We need this sooner than later.
Yeah, and most of this is covered by the state.
Yeah, covered by the state, um, yes, sooner than later, I haven't.
What, what is different from the state then?
Well, I think everything's covered by the state, it, you know, you need to have the town tag.
The daily fee, I, I don't believe.
I don't know if the, what we charge for boarding is standard across the board, I don't think that's stated anywhere in the state, but it could be, I could look at that too. Um, I haven't been enforcing the leash law, cause we haven't really talked about it. So, once we say it, that's okay, I will start enforcing it, people, I'll put stuff out there so people know it, now it will be started to be en- reen- enforced.
Well, I think we, until such time without, I don't know.
I think, I, I think we'd have to, even, um, for the way our bylaws are written, any rules and regulations, she can issue a, a non-criminal disposition. You have to adopt it.
Right.
As a rule and regulation. Because if that, if you don't have that in place, you can't, you can't.
I was only impression.
Can't cite a, a non-criminal disposition.
Yeah, but then, don't they appeal to the court?
They do appeal to the court.
They can appeal to us as well.
Right, they can appeal to you guys.
She can cite, and then she, they have, they have a right to a hearing with us.
Yep.
Or they can hit the back of that thing, cause it's still a violation regardless. So they can, see if they can waive the criminal, I mean, the, the citation. But there's still a violation that she observed or any of our agents observed, yeah?
And what you're feeling on charging twenty-five dollars a day until, uh, we get that in place, if we don't have it in place already?
I, I think it's fine right now, and then moving forward, as we talk about a plan.
Mm-hmm.
With a different facility, or we can always up it, I think that's reasonable now.
I think this is fine as it stands right now.
When I first read this, I said, I looked at it and I said, I guess, it, it makes sense, and it's, uh, fair. Seems fair, anybody that have to comply, pretty much, I have a dog. It's roaming around, it's, uh, it is what it is, right?
How about a motion to adopt?
Make the motion.
Second.
A motion made in seconded, included discussion, seeing on all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries.
You know how we're making the manual for our, um.
Yeah. I'll do your report now while you're up.
I think, um, it hasn't been quiet, I was gonna say it's been quiet, but it hasn't been quiet, I've gone on a house inspection with, um, the health agent. It had, um, had a few deer hit, it's coming to that time of year, that they'll be out in the roads. So, if you're out there driving, be careful, dusk and dawn, because they'll be out there at night. Um, a lot of telephone calls, a lot of people, um, wanting to have livestock. Either looking at property in town, or are you live in town? So I've been answering a lot of questions about, you know, how much land they need to have, what they need to do, that kinda stuff, so. I've had some, uh, I've had a few people call me about seven forty-one Main Street, I would like to put a couple horses back there, I says, okay. I know that property, where are you planning on putting them? So, um, I've had a few, yesterday was a mini horse, which takes a lot less room now than a regular sized horse. So there's a lot of people, either looking to come into town to have livestock, horses and cattle? Or people already here that are looking to expand what they have or don't have.
Now, with the new right to farm and the agricult- agriculture commission. Do they, does somebody apply to the agricultural commission, or just to you, or?
Just to me, the only time I may have to go to the agricultural commission is if there's a problem. I did have somebody ask me, oh, what if, you know, the neighbor next door doesn't like the co- uh, the smell of my cows? I said, that's why we have a agricultural commission, they go to them, we meet together, we try to make some kind of, you know. It might be just moving your manure pile, your manure pile needs to be removed altogether from your property. Or it might just be that it's certain times of year, and that's the way it is unfortunately, you know, so.
Okay. You just can't create a nuisance.
You can't create a nuisance, and this guy didn't wanna create a nuisance, that's why he was asking all sorts of questions, he was, you know. I'm buying a property, there's already people there, I says, but you do have the right to have animals, but you have to be a good neighbor, and that's what I tell people, you need to be a good neighbor. And, you know, if they say, you know what, I don't like the way your manure pile is, it's too close to my property, then you figure out, okay, either I need to move it somewhere else, or I need to get a truck and have it moved weekly or whatever.
Once, when somebody applies for a stable, right, is it you that looks at it and then just approves it?
My. Yeah.
Cause it's.
Once the structure's up, that's not my department.
Yeah. Cause.
Once the structure's up, I go out usually.
The way it works in Lakeville, it's actually, I think it worked out pretty good, the way I've seen it, is the, um, and I'm looking, not looking to change anything, just ideas. Is, when somebody applies for a stable, right, uh, if, uh, immediate bidders, or whatever it is, you pick, whether you pick, uh, a certain distance or immediate bidders, are notified.
Mm-hmm.
And that person comes in, they apply, there's certain areas where you gotta stay from your well.
Right.
That, so there's a bunch of setbacks you have to meet, uh, you can't ask for variance, and at that time, neighbors already, if you're bidders, have the opportunity to express any concerns that might, might not even think of. And at that time, it's decided yes or no, it's yearly, um, but then, that'll continue as long as they pay it. And so at that point, like I'm saying, it, it is the opportunity to avoid any concerns. This is just idea.
I know it's an idea, is Lakeville right to farm? Lakeville right to farm?
That I've seen a lot of times. They're doing the same, they're on the same avenue, they're trying, yeah.
They're, they're trying, they're not right to farm now. I don't know, with right to farm, if, I, yes, we could, uh, do the bidders, but if push comes to shove, those people have the right to have the farm, as long as they're not going against any laws, bylaws, or state laws. So, not that that means people don't have any say, because I'm very, I'm very, very cautious about, okay, you know, you have people around you, what are you doing with your manure? And what are you feeding, especially cows and stuff like that, because if you're feeding silage, it smells different than if you're feeding hay and grain. You know, so what are you feeding? If you're just feeding grass, that's great, it doesn't smell as much as silage and other things. If you've got horses, are you removing that from the property? Are you just having one horse? Is the horse being removed from the property to go out trail riding and stuff like that, or is your horse standing in this little corral? If it's just standing in a little corral, nine times out of ten, I say, you know what, you need to figure something else out, because the do- animal's not getting enough exercise, you'll have animals chewing things and kicking things down, if they don't have enough r- room to move around and.
I'm talking like, you have a, a paddock that's, what is it, twenty feet from long?
I'm not sure how much it's supposed to be.
Probably, whatever it is, so if you have, you put the paddock right up on a property, whatever it is, somebody's property line, you might create a nuisance.
Well, yes, that's why I tell people.
Or whatever it is, you have them like, there was there nothing a week ago, and now they're right there, you're like.
That's why I tell people, you gotta be, you've gotta be a good neighbor.
This could be a problem. Yeah.
Um, I mean, I, I have a situation in North Ain. Now, you go by this house, you would never know what they have in their backyard. They have a stable, they have three horses back there, they have some goats, they have some chickens, you never smell anything, you never know that it's back there. The neighbor, just because he doesn't like animals, is causing a whole bunch of problems. Has nothing to do with the smell, and it's not even near his property line, it's up in the hill. And as I said, you can't even see it from the street, if you didn't know it was there, you would never, never know. There are just gonna be some people that aren't gonna like having horses. Like I had a farm closed down on Porton Street, because a neighbor down at the street, in a cul-de-sac, said, I moved here because I knew there wasn't gonna be any animals around me, and I don't like the smell. And the farmer heard three or four people say the same thing, and said, you know what, it's not worth it, and walked away from his farm.
I remember that one.
I, you know, there's always gonna be those people, so this is why the agricultural commission is set up, so hopefully we can have that mediation of people that enjoy farming, but also will listen to people go, you know what, I don't like the smell, or there's too many flies, what can we do about it?
Is there a minimum, uh, acreage?
The state requires an acre per animal, but as I tell people, I can fiddle with that if I know a- horses are getting off the property and exercising, up in, on that one I was talking about, they have three horses. One's really old, so doesn't leave the property, but the other two taking it weekly out, tr- trail riding on the weekends, they go to shows, they do all sorts of stuff with those horses. So I don't mind that it's not an acre per horse up there. If you're gonna have cattle and goats and stuff like that, I require to make sure, more, because you need to have the grassland.
I'm saying like, something like Bedford Street or whatever it is.
Bedford Street.
Small streets where.
Right, Bedford Street, that's a.
Yeah, again, an animal sitting right, right on the side of your house.
Right, I asked them to get the animals out, but they had, they had chickens.
Yeah.
They had chickens, so the chickens, you know, that's something completely different, cause you don't need much land for chickens, they don't have.
Yeah. All right, I was just wondering what's.
That's it.
Okay, anything wanna ask, no, that's it.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, moving on to review discussion at MHOA Annual Conference, November fourteenth through the sixteenth. Who has, uh.
Son of the boss.
Gotta see my other good piece there.
Seacrest. Let me read it. Every year, local public health professionals come to the MHOA Annual Conference to share ideas, to learn from experts, and to engage our state partners. With ever dwindling resources for training and professional development, validate the investment in your public health career by attending the largest public health conference in New England. Twenty seventeen, MHOA Conference was held at the Seacrest Beach Hotel in Falmouth, and brought over three hundred influential attendees. Allowing exhibitors and sponsors to reach the year's most concentrated local public health officials across Massachusetts. Twenty eighteen, conference will be held again at the Seacrest. And, blah, blah, blah. Best deal is to attend for all three days. Hotel will be reserved and paid directly at a discounted rate of a hundred twenty per night. Registration will begin in late summer.
It just began.
Did it? Yeah, we gotta sign up.
All right, I did it. Did you wanna go, one day, two days?
I don't know anything about it, so I'm gonna rely, if you guys feel I should go, and how many days you want me to go, and.
I, I, I enjoy it, I think it's good for the agent to go, or whoever, whoever we wanna send.
Yep.
I've heard it's just a lot of information.
I've only gone two days, I don't do the Friday, the Friday, I think they go for, uh.
Just a half day, it's usually one thing.
Yeah.
Um, there's usually, there's two, there's the MHOA and then the Miha, Miha Yankee Conference, it's just the better of the two. They have a lot more tracks.
I think we talked about that in one of the previous meetings, so.
Yep, um. I don't know what their Friday is, a couple years ago, the Friday, it's a half day on Fridays, the Friday was actually, we got to go out to the, um,
At the.
Septic Test Site.
Oh.
In Vinesville, which is really good, um, so it's, depends what they do, but I always, I always at least go for Wednesday and Thursday.
Ah. You see, is it. Is the agenda out yet?
Not yet.
Yeah, they pick on a field trip day, or whatever it is, and.
So. Yeah, so, but I think the Friday, now they're including the Friday, even if you just do, just Wednesday or just Thursday, they automatically include, include the Friday session as well, so.
Oak Street.
Is that conservation?
Conservation, is that conservation?
We came on, uh, a couple of weeks ago, and they told us we scheduled it for today.
Conservation.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming they'll be down.
We just came there, and they said no, it's supposed to be over here, so.
Conservation meeting across the hall.
I think they're over, they meet, they start at seven thirty.
Right, yeah, no, seven thirty, uh, they told me seven o'clock when I was here the last time, and I came in, it was eight o'clock.
Well, maybe seven.
Thank you.
Somebody told me seven thirty.
That's okay, they said seven thirty two.
It's over in that room over there anyway.
Thank you.
All right. Now, you mentioned another one, Matt?
Yeah, I think it's next week, this is the better of the two, in, in my opinion, at least.
This one?
Yeah, they, they offer more, uh, of a, uh, variety of.
And then they, they have the one that we go to, uh, MAHB, the one at Time?
Yeah, that's, that's it.
I like them.
I'm going on one on Saturday, uh, whatever, the date hasn't been set yet, hasn't been, you know.
Yeah, I think it has.
Has it?
This is, uh, I think it's the, the week of, uh, what's the holiday in November?
February.
That is it?
February seventeenth.
I think it's that week.
It's like usually the second, the second Saturday, I think.
Yeah. I think I can get you, I'll forward you the email that I got.
I don't know.
I think it would be nice if you went.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can, for, once the schedule comes out, it's a little easier.
Yeah, you wanna table this for now, until we see what's wanted?
When do you have to sign up, Mike?
It should be, I'm sure, I'm ready.
Oh, it's, funny time.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, it's, funny time. I've signed up as late as like, a week before.
Let's, let's uh motion it until then.
Uh, make the motion to table until next week.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
All right.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
They're probably still trying to get speakers and everything, so.
Well, I'm gonna step out for a second while Todd is out too.
Todd is just looking to see what he thought was good, I circled the stuff that I have, so.
Uh-huh. Yeah, that's it.
Equipment. Yeah.
Yeah, like he wasn't sure what to order, he knows he needs a thermometer and, you know, different items, thanks, Dave.
Yeah, I always have that little probe with backup of my, I have the Pro Plus that has the probe and the laser combined, so, that's a lot cheaper than uh.
So just whichever ones you guys think is better.
Yeah. You know, like you can pass like the.
And these, that are the kind of thing that we need.
Don't worry about test strips, cause they're supposed to have them if they don't write them up for you, so.
Yeah. You know what, I, it's funny, be, back, back in the day, used to have the test strips, and they didn't have it, I could at least verify how strong it was, cause sometimes I'd be like, oh, this is strong, I put the test strip in, and it's obviously too strong. They're supposed to have it, so, it's a violation without it.
Strong. Right, I write them up.
Yeah, it's good.
A hundred and fifty bucks, I think, only got maybe.
I don't think it bought it anything, so there must be plenty in the budget.
Sorry, what's up? It is conservation meeting that they had.
Second.
Yeah, but there's nobody upstairs to send them to, cause everybody's in the select meeting, so, there's no town clerk to ask, so, I showed them where the agendas were, and it was corner Maple Swamp and Oak.
Uh. The clerk's up, it's still on somewhere else?
Yeah. I didn't see anybody.
I have a problem, we're just gonna table until the agenda comes out, and then that way, it's just one day, it's like, uh, nothing, and the other day it's like, ooh, shit, oh yeah, so.
That's fine. You gotta, somebody kinda doing this fair, but, you should've went in more.
I just signed up for those, cause I need credits.
See, I don't need credits.
Yeah, uh, I circled this stuff, we should get, it's only three things, and it's a lot cheaper than uh, uh, there it is, than the other places, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay.
Do you need the, um, MHOA things, or?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Better go.
Oh, they told that we table it till next week.
No, no, I'm looking for the paper.
Yeah.
The flyer, just so we got it to.
MHOA.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I might have put it on, did it?
He's trying to steal from me.
Keep an eye on me.
Somebody's got it.
I was trying to find the MH, MAHB one, I, I'll forward it to Ryan.
Okay.
Okay.
That one's, that one's coming up in November as well, that's a good one.
So. We were gonna discuss the inspector tools and equipment, and I think you have a handle now on which, which ones.
Yeah, I just was looking for some.
It's in the budget, just go ahead.
No, I know, but I just wanted the important, which one would be best bait, cause he's gotta know better than I do, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay, so you're all set with that?
Once he circles, once he circles it, I'll.
Yep.
I always have the little X probe, just as a backup, just in case the other one would die.
Okay, move on to old business.
We all set with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, review this, that's an act eight hundred, Center Street, Board of Health expectations on management of onsite sanitary sewers disposal. Um, we had asked the homeowner to come in and review, uh, conditions that we felt were necessary on the uh, on the site for good management of the san- onsite system, and the individual's not here, uh.
Well, let me fill in, um, it was, it was on me to call her and kind, we've been back and forth a few times, her mother had a concussion, so she's been doing a lot of doctor's appointments.
Alright.
Um, she was not able to be here, but she read it, she said she had issues with a couple things in it, um, and she wants to talk to her lawyer about them. Um, but one of them, I think she misunderstood, it was the last one about reoccupation of the existing dwelling, that she said, you're gonna need a new septic system. It's like, it doesn't say that, it says you have to abandon the tight tank, so, um, the only other thing is, is that she's saying that the building inspector approved a detached in-law apartment, so therefore, she believes that a lot of this is not necessarily relevant when we say you can't live in the house and the detached dwelling, so, um, say she wants to talk to her lawyer about it, whether the board wants to move forward and sign it, and she can appeal it, you know, um, she has the right to appeal it to the, and, and say, hey, I got a problem. Or we wanna wait and give her two weeks and let her talk to a lawyer and, 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 and deal with it before we actually en- enforce it, you know what I mean? But it's up to the board what you guys wanna do, but she's had other things on her plate.
I'll make a motion to table this for two weeks after that, that's it.
So table until the next meeting?
Yep, and if she gets back, great, if she doesn't, then we'll just go ahead, two weeks.
Alright, I'll second that. Okay, motion made seconded, uh, to table for two weeks. Any further discussion? Seeing none in all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, carries.
Sorry.
Okay. Review to discuss an act on an uptight house concern, follow-up letter, um, if you wanna fill in, the two, the two other members in, I know about this already.
And I've already talked to the annual control officer about it, so, as the board recalls, we sent out that questionnaire to the whole neighborhood, and we're having some rats. Um, annual control officer set some bait, um, it's been quiet for a couple months, no leads, had any sightings, nothing. So, we drafted a letter that we wanted that you guys to sign and send out, to, to the questionnaire that we sent out to everybody, we told them we'd follow up, so we were gonna mail the follow-up letter all. So we were gonna have you sign it tonight. I got a call this afternoon from a woman, uh, in that neighborhood who did see a rat, um, today. Now, she was one of the first ones back in April that had rat sightings, set two bait traps. Um, the pest control pump company came back for three months and they kept refilling the poison?
Poison.
Poison traps, or what you call them, bait boxes? And at the end of June, both bait boxes were empty, but there was no new evidence of activity, so pest control said, I think you're done. July and August, never saw a rat, saw one today, um.
Did you see it?
No, this was the Saturday one, at like four fifteen when she called, so, or maybe five, four thirty, five o'clock, it was like a half an hour conversation.
Did you know?
So I've gone over Stacy, but I told the woman, Stacy and I will go look tomorrow, cause we're not gonna be able to do it tonight, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, she never got our letter, which is weird, because she's right in the heart of it, and we knew she needed to be on the list, cause she's already, back in April, we had the issues, so, um. So this house is adjacent to the Boston Mill and.
That other house, but she did say, you said that the rat came from across the street. There's also chickens across the street, also.
Mm-hmm. So, we, we got some looking around to do, and we may have to, um, send barn letters to some houses, specific houses, so, tomorrow we'll be able to look into it, so I'd like to not send out the letter today, saying we've had no rat sightings, so.
Is that, is the property on School Street, or which street is it on?
That's on Bedford Street.
Bedford.
It's on Bedford?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So I, I guess I'd like the board to table the follow-up letter at this point in time.
Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, motion to table is in order.
We'll, we'll, we'll make the motion to table, the, uh, the letter drafted, follow-up letter.
Second.
Motion made seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none in all's in favor?
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
You wanna do the next one, I'll kick those.
Zero County Old Railroad Bed update. Um, last I knew, we were contacting the owner of the property.
Yep, Northeast Clean Energy Corp.
Yeah. What I, what have we do with that?
We received a letter from attorney Robert, Robert Fredericks, uh, which states that he would like to advise the board that he represents the Northeast Clean Energy Corp with regards to Zero County Street, the old railroad bed. Um, they received the letter dated July seventeenth of complaints and trash and debris on the property. He would like us to be advised that they're in the process of obtaining a survey to attempt to determine where the boundaries lay, so that they can ascertain as to whether or not these objects are actually on their property. So they said, um, if they are in fact on the property, they will be dealing with it in an expedited manner.
Manner.
Manner, sorry, and they'll update us as soon as the survey moves forward.
That's a good reason.
Can't ask for more than that.
So, you responded to him, right?
Yes, yes, we sent an email out thanking him for letting us know.
I think the bed is eighty feet wide there, but I'm not quite sure, but that's good, at least we get some kind of response.
Right, so do we wanna table this for a month, or I don't know how long it takes to have a survey conducted, so.
I give it a month.
I would say at least a month.
Yeah, or until they come.
That's a, that's a fairly substantial survey, cause that's a long piece of property and everything, so it might take a survey or a month, just to.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just ta- just table until we get a response, I'm sure, I mean, they have an attorney involved, so it's not just some.
Yeah, let's revisit it in like thirty days.
It's not a public hearing, so we don't have to, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, just keep, keep it out, and if we don't hear anything in two months, then we'll go, you know, but, I'm sure we will.
Okay.
Is that your motion?
Uh, yeah, ta- table this until, uh, further communications received.
Second.
Okay, motion made seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none in all favor?
Aye.
Pose, I also, there's table and everything, yeah.
I'm just going on home.
No, no, no.
Okay, we can deal with DNE at the same time, I think, it deals with the, uh, proposed regulation changes. Uh, we were scheduling a date for our next workshop. Which probably the best day is, if there is day.
Yep.
Unless we wanted to schedule it at the end of our next regular meeting, might be here, uh.
They might have to order dinner.
I was gonna say, but usually pretty wiped out by the end of, uh.
Well, I, well, I know that. Okay.
October fourth.
Whatever your pleasure.
We have, we need time to type everything up too, and next week I got a really busy weekend, if you guys looked at the schedule, but we have Double Fork on Sunday, Taste of Night Monday, um, and Farm Table on Saturday. That's outside of the normal work week, so, and I got two parked out, and a coalition meeting.
Right, and. Yep.
Yep.
See you there.
Yeah, so.
And we won the Y, you know.
Are you gonna go to that one?
Yeah.
That's your, that's your, now you're over there now, yeah.
And then we have, uh, look at, this, the following week is.
Oh, yeah, you're in that coalition now, I'll see you there.
Yeah. Um.
But you two guys show on top for us, tenders, right?
Following week's really busy too, I, I think the fourth will be tight, what's the eleventh like for you guys?
Beth's there. Right, not really.
Oh, it's fine, I didn't.
No, that's just.
But Beth is always there, holding the flag.
Holding the flag.
Oh, yeah, I just figured, I just figured the tenth we have a meeting.
Look at this week. Oh. Well, let's.
Yeah, we don't wanna do it the same week, the tenth, eleventh.
All right, and we can't do it the eighteenth, that's a special time meeting.
On a Thursday.
Better do it the fourth.
Why, are we running Thursday?
Yeah, I think.
No, not us.
Oh, the town meeting on a Thursday, I don't know, we're not charged with that.
That, which is, the fourth is the first one.
Oh, but if I went away on the fifth, I ended up playing the fourth.
First, Thursday, right?
Yeah.
That works out, mm-hmm.
Me?
Well, we all have meetings every Wednesday, so it's got to be one Thursday.
Uh, Tuesdays and Fridays, Mondays are must-.
That's why that is important, but you're right.
Thursdays, Thursday's the best day for us.
Yeah.
I like that first, first Monday, my first Thursday.
It did work out.
Thursday, Thursday, we can keep it short.
October fourth, what time?
Six.
Six worked out.
You guys are bringing lunch? Dinner?
I'm bringing a little.
Tissue candy, diet coke.
I'm bringing a regular lasagna, yeah. I'm, I'm dying to try this design, he talks about it all the time.
I gotta get my wife.
It's probably really good.
She might be watching, but, since I'm not making lasagna.
My wife's chicken parm.
Um, okay, we're all, we're all set with that date?
Yeah, October fourth at six P M, at the Board of Health Office.
Okay. Um, well, I, I don't know if this was put on prior to our last workshop, proposed regulation changes. Uh, kinda goes with our next workshop, so.
Well, we put it on in case something came up that we wanted to talk about, if we, it's on the agenda, it's not an act, it's just a review discuss.
Yeah.
Like this, the anal control.
Yeah, this one.
Right, like that, or something like with the butter, you know, we had a butter notices for variances, and one of the things.
You already brought it up.
I, and I'm still gonna send you some of those things that I'm, I, we talked about at the meeting, and then maybe you can have it for.
Now, that, that's not required, right, the butter notices for, uh, variances on waivers, waivers on.
Only, only when it affects the butter. So if it didn't affect the butter, if it was something from his own foundation, or whatever it was.
For property lines.
Well, there's, there's a list, fifteen, four, five, lists like twenty things, that it's a waiver, I, I call it a waiver only because it's different.
Yeah.
We're gonna be having one that's coming in that's going to be a variance, because they only have two feet of suitable material, they don't have four feet. So that is a variance from Title Five that has to notify all their butters.
Yeah.
Um, this, these ones here tonight, they were waivers, but you had to notify in a butter because their property was affected, but that's why I differentiate that way, because variance requires public hearing, waivers don't, so.
And a public hearing, uh, is it just the immediate butters, or is it so many feet out?
It would only be the ones, in fact, like here, if the public hearing is only for the neighbor who they were less than ten feet, but this one that they'll two feet, it's just the ones touching it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
Or across the street.
Okay.
So, which is.
So they notify, they have an opportunity to speak up.
Which is one of the reasons why I was gonna suggest, or we were gonna suggest, that we have a fee for variances, because it involves public hearings and notices and minutes, and, y- you know, more paperwork to check and, and that kind of thing, so there, there's more services involved.
Absolutely.
But that, we'll add that to our discussion at the meeting, I just wanted to throw it out there, that's one of the things that I think would be, not a, you know, thousand dollar fee here, we're talking, but just enough to cover all the extra work.
At least, at least postage and, and clerical time.
Well, we don't do the postage, they do it.
They do it, they, they have to notify.
They have to, they have to put it in the paper and.
But we have to check to make sure they notified the right of butters, and you, you know, that is a notice proper and all that.
Oh, it's not like the zoning, but, uh, okay.
We could make it that way, but I don't want to.
No, 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 just more work, no.
No.
Okay. Well, permit status, I think we're all set with that too, right, for now?
We will wait.
Anything other you wanna add?
We're waiting on, we talked about the arsenic and the, that, that we were gonna add that into the regulations for arsenic, so same thing, we left it on here as a, in case something we wanted to talk about while we were in the process, so.
Will we add our regs?
Yeah.
So no, we don't need to do anything with that.
Okay.
Yeah, when we adopt those regulations, we, we adopt these at the same time.
Mm-hmm. One, one notice in the paper for everything we wanna do.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, the next one is revised marijuana regulations, uh, we left it as it was, I wasn't at that meeting, but it was sent to town council
Yes.
for review and comment.
It did come back from town council, he had just a couple of typos that he made, so this is the completed draft that he recommended we.
Okay. Got the word documented, so, they, they didn't change it all, so.
Mm-hmm. Yep, um, these, uh, let's see. All right, these are the three changes, sorry.
I saw, you know, yeah.
Yeah, so those were what, and, and it has been incorporated into that.
Is there anywhere in here that says, and the fee will be, we still have to add it?
I thought we added our fees already.
The fee was gonna be added on to the pre-schedule, not into the regulation, so if we had to change it, we didn't have to redo the whole regulation and do another hearing or anything like that.
Okay. Correct.
Or have public hearings or anything like that. Right, yeah.
Okay.
So is this part of our regs when we have the hearing, and, or is this a separate hearing?
Well, that depends how quick we are gonna do, get an advertisement, get the other regs done.
Yeah, that's gonna be too far up.
This needs to get.
So could we do this in leash law maybe, with, and do one set of public hearings for that and a leash? So could we do this in leash law maybe, and do one set of public hearings for that and a leash law, and then do another one for the septic?
Certainly could do that.
Cause I'm expecting there to be people for these.
Yeah, I think we need to, we need to get the side of the white.
We could, we could put this in the paper saying, we're gonna have a hearing soon, the next meeting. Fourteen days.
Well, that would mean we had to call the paper yesterday.
That's what I'm saying, you, and and your earliest, on the earliest way, you can get the paper notified, and then we just.
I don't know what the restrictions are of the, for these notices. Is it fourteen days?
Uh they would be October tenth.
They would be October tenth.
Oh, ten days, okay.
Yep, so you'd be, be looking at, yeah, you better off do it October tenth.
Thursday, Wednesday, so.
Better save them for.
That meeting will be on the tenth, October tenth.
September.
Okay.
And we don't have any host agreements going on, right?
Not holiday, right?
You wanna have, you wanna, the, what I was told, that that, that, those hearings that they had, the state held, you wanna have a regulation in place before you already go into a host agreement.
Yeah.
We don't have anything going on, you know, we have, it looks like we have time.
Yeah, sorry.
Probably no, uh, no, cause they'd have to come to us, right?
Correct.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't had anybody come to us.
Mm-hmm. So, do we need to notify the selectmen, the, no, this is just, okay.
So you'll uh, just that same procedure, you'll be able to get it in the paper, we scheduled the date, and then we'll have the hearing, we'll open that up and say, um, if anybody's here for it, and we'll ask. Um to adopt these regulations as prepared. And.
And that would be at our six o'clock meeting, would we start our meeting at six thirty and have the hearing at six?
Uh, we could, we could have it at six, and then we close it, and we close that meeting.
Right away, six.
And uh, we vote, and then we open up the next, it'd be a hearing.
So it's.
It'll be article number one on our agenda, is what you're saying, well, not one, but yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Basically.
Right, but would it be a total separate meeting notice, or is it part of the vote of health agenda, and it would just be hearing marijuana regs, adopt marijuana?
I believe it's part of the, the regular agenda.
Yeah.
It is, but you're only advertising in the paper for marijuana, you don't advertise the rest of them, but you have to post the whole agenda with.
Correct.
Yeah.
I'll get you, I will get you a advertisement for it.
Okay.
Yeah, but normally it would just say like, it's on October, whatever, uh at six P M, a a hearing, uh public hearing for the regulations on to ensure the sanitary, safe operation of marijuana establishments. Uh will be held at six P M at the Denny Town Hall, lower level, whatever it is, you give them all the.
Whatever. And a copy of the regulations, draft regulations are available at the Board of Health Office.
Oh, okay, so I don't have to put this, it's just, okay.
We'll prepare something for it, yeah.
No, you do not.
Let's get that room before anybody else does.
Oh, yes, okay.
You gotta do it two consecutive weeks. You'll have a, you could just have it.
Oh yeah, seven and fourteen days prior.
Okay.
And uh.
Believe that's the process, but if you wanna.
I'll check back, cause I think when we did our.
I have it printed out with the regulation changes, bring it all with me.
Oh, thank you, I was gonna say, when we do the non-criminal regs, I'll look back.
And I, I'll, I can also send you, what we just, we just did our, our regulation, and I can send it to you.
Okay, awesome.
Like the procedure.
Now, do we wanna, as long as we're running the ad in the paper, do you wanna do leash law and marijuana for that same night? Say, cause they're both ready to go, septic regs and the well regs are on.
Yeah. Yeah, because they're twenty-five dollars a day, I think we need to get that in there in order to be able to enforce it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright, those two.
So we'll write up, well, send it to us, we'll write it up, and then we'll send it back for everybody to look at and.
It'll be two separate notices, correct?
May.
Yeah, we can get it at, deserved, couldn't we, October third?
We don't have meeting on the third. It's the tenth and the twenty-fourth.
Oh, oh, that's right.
To be safe to give everybody time to get the notices to the paper and all like that, maybe better than twenty-fourth.
Hmm, well, depending how quick, if you have access to your template, and.
How soon you're up?
You said you had the, but if you both send it, and I can get it right away.
Love to know, I'm gonna go.
Cause we have, basically, we would have something like ten days to get it to the paper to run fourteen days prior to the next meeting. Because if we meet every fourteen days, we'd have to get it like sixteen days out to get it to run fourteen days, so we've, we've got like ten days to get it done, which I think we can get done, so.
That's true. Yep.
But do it tentative, cause if for some reason something happens, and we don't get it in, or it's not.
Yeah.
So we'll shoot for the tenth.
Yeah.
It's two consecutive.
Two, I'll send it, I'll send it to you.
Fourteen and seven, right?
And basically, it actually says for the, on those, it's for well and septic, but it's always good to do all our regs by public hearing, hearing?
Well, marijuana and leash law, I think we really need to, yeah.
That's what I'm saying, it's, it's good to notify, uh like, but but what I'm gonna send you is, the procedures, it says spes- spes- specific, uh specifically on wells and septic.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, so you don't want me to just say, you said this wrong, but, okay.
So you're gonna do a public hearing on those other two.
Well, you're saying it's the format, and then, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then later on after that, uh it tells you to post that, it's been uh adopted, it'll, it'll tell you the whole procedure at the end.
Okay.
We gotta post it afterwards as well, and it's available online or in the town hall regulations.
Just make it available at town hall, copies of Board of Health.
Yeah. After we adopt.
Okay.
Oh, after we, oh yeah, after it's done.
So on the agenda, just so I've got this, it's gonna be public hearing. Adopt marijuana, uh regulations, and then.
Under new business, just through new business.
Oh, okay, so we'll be in the business.
You're gonna send your template.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll be alright.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're discussing, uh, public hearing is already.
Just like you've always done, except that we, this one runs in the paper, all these other ones don't need to go in the paper, that's the only difference.
Yeah.
Okay.
Same heading you use on zoning, notice of public hearing.
Okay.
Date, location.
I think we're all set, huh?
Yep.
So do we need to make a motion on the marijuana regs then, to?
Make a motion to uh. Accept what's printed here as a draft, and uh to advertise in the paper and have a hearing on tentative the October tenth.
Second. Okay, motion being seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Alright.
Close, motion carries. Thank you.
Second.
No, you're doing fine. Is it, no, it's not this one, it's recycling.
Oh, it was just recycling, I think Kev and Tom Ferry took care of that earlier in our meeting tonight, or just, it was an update on what.
Yeah.
Okay, this, this is pretty much the update, uh Tom and I have been going back and forth with emails, and um.
Yeah.
I had mentioned, Kim, what do you think about the rigid plastic, whatever, yeah, it's only, right now, we're not generating enough, and then that, that market price is still not gonna be conducive. And he thinks that uh it's best to just kinda keep an eye on it, see how this all plays out, then, cause he, he's right, when you, once you commit to that, that rigid plastic grant.
Mm-hmm.
You're gonna, you need an alert, we're not, we're not supplying enough, that that vendor's gonna be like, what the heck, you know?
Mm-hmm.
And uh he also brought up a good point, when Borges picks it up and sends it over to, uh, he's at ABC, that's bulky waste.
Yep.
They're gonna sort it out anyways, cause the main goal is to get that stuff out of the waste stream, so you don't wanna be putting uh some rigid plastic, hard plastic, those pools and those kid toys. In the landfill, cause nothing's gonna happen, million years ago by, it's still gonna be there, you wanna be able to get it out of there, put it into another uh waste stream, um recycle, right? So, I think we're on the same, we have the same goals, but right now it's not gonna, we still have to monitor closely. That's all I have for that, that's all.
Curbside textiles recycling.
Alright, so we get a uh, an email, um, came out of the blue, I didn't request it, um. Twenty-six communities in Massachusetts have adopted curbside textile recycling, the service is provided by Simple Recycling at no cost to the town or residents. They also pay each town twenty dollars per ton for each ton of material collected. The service is provided every week to more than two and a half million people nationally and nearly five hundred thousand in Massachusetts, there is no cost to the service. And all the resident outreach, material collection, customer service, and materials processing is handled for you. Littleboro is the first community in southeastern Massachusetts to offer the service to residents, a number of other communities are nearing a public announcement of their participation, or se- participation. Please let me know if you'd like to learn more about the program, there is no cost and the work is done for you, with nearly seven percent of the trash being recyclable textiles. The town can save money by helping target this category of material, signed by Stephen Lasoc- Lasocus, From Waste to Zero.
They reached out to those people, like one, one day till we were in there, they sent us that old pink bag.
I don't remember that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't mind, if you want to come down.
It was a year ago.
Yeah, I've got a list.
Now, so they, yeah, I had a, I actually had the person do a demo, not demonstration, little uh talk at one of our recycling meetings, then.
Presentation.
Yes, um, probably two months ago, um, I thought it was here.
Well, this, 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 it was a month ago, so.
They uh.
They uh, basically, this company partnered with Waste Zero, and I believe what they do is, I don't remember if they would send us like a little case of bags. Or if they just provide a phone number and you can call them, they'll mail you a bag for free, it's basically like the Waste Zero trash bags, and, but they're pink, and. Say you have a, you know, you clean your closet out, your dresser, and you have a bunch of clothes that can be recycled or used, whatever. You call, you get the bag, you stuff the bag, and um, I think they'll tell you what day to put it out, and you just put it out on the curb, and then you drive by and pick it up, but there you go, and then they. Yeah, it's whatever the amount is, twenty bucks a ton, they just mail it down.
Now, do they take like, say, ripped clothes, or is that just, it's not just clothes that are meant to be reworn?
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, and they'd give us probably a template of what they make.
Nope. Cause then, then they sort it out in things that are in really good condition that can be actually laundered and then sold or sent to.
Yeah.
You know, other countries, things like that, they'll do that, and then other fibers that say it's clothes that are torn or ripped, they can be reused and turned into like rags and things like that, so they actually do use everything.
So the part I like is if they, if it's seven percent of the trash stream that they're taking out, that would be less that we're paying, you know, a tonnage that we're sending to.
They did a really good job, I don't know if it'd be worth reaching out to them and say, hey, there's something we wanna do, you know, we're thinking about doing.
Right now, it's just.
I'm not, I'm not the heavy.
You want coming down and talking to us for, for ten minutes?
Yeah, right now, it's just learning more about the program.
That's what, it was literally like ten, ten minutes, the guy came down, they had no problem coming down and talking about it, um, they knew a lot about it, and that's what it did.
Anything to help this uh.
And it was, it was like, nothing that we really had to do, it was just, yes, we wanna do it, and they put it on the schedule, and they tell you how to advertise whatever they do, so it really was bad.
This might cut down on the clothing bin, or the need for clothing bins.
Mm-hmm. That's what I, that was one thing that he said, he's, you know, the clothing bins, they kind of attract other trash.
Yeah.
And this.
Right, right, it says clothes only, and you have the toys all around it.
Can eliminate the need for so many clothing bins and things like that, and so. I think it'd be worth reaching out to them and see if they'd be willing to come down.
So is that a motion?
Yeah, yeah, I'll make a motion to uh send an email back to.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't trying to do your job.
Second.
Whatever, whatever that.
Where was named this?
See if they'd be willing, we can put them first on the agenda, maybe like the end of October, October twenty-fourth meeting, give them plenty of time.
See what is available, it is.
Yeah, or represent.
Second, yeah.
Motion being seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Alright.
Close, motion carries.
They chose pink bags, cause no town in Massachusetts threw Waste Zero had pink bags. No, nothing specific to it.
Twenty dollars a ton is not much, but the seven percent.
Oh, it keeps out the trash, and it's a nice service to, you know, residents.
Seven percent is a pretty big impact.
Since we're talking about trash and recycling, how's our bags, good, pretty good?
Yeah, I think they're great.
I haven't seen any complaints.
I haven't heard one complaint, yeah, so.
Not gonna, not gonna. I know, we're gonna jinx it up.
I, I like.
Is anybody on any of the Facebook pages or whatever, where people talk about?
I use it, I, I think they're great.
What, you said in two months?
I saw one complaint early on, I don't know which bags I were using, but you said the new bags are no good, but I haven't heard anything or seen anything.
I think it was still.
I think they're fantastic.
The only issue we had was I did get that one call that the ties were too short, because they had the short ties, but I had someone that held it along, and I brought him in, and she came and picked him up, and she was happy, and off she went, so.
On a side note, we picked up uh another vendor, Somerset Country Store in Somerset, our marijuana duty, we'll start selling them as of Thursday.
Great.
They should have them in stock.
Very good. Yeah, we talked to the DPW and delivering's not a problem, so.
Okay, I'll tell, I'll let them know.
Alright.
Sounds good. Number eight, expenditures, payroll and bills paid.
Uh, so we have our payroll, um, for the week. Um, no, it's not the week, it's for the month of August, was ten thousand three hundred and fifty-nine dollars, and our expenses were forty-two thousand four hundred and eighty-one dollars. And we'd like to see them, the expenses was, um, for just trucking and Covanta, the bulk of it, those fifteen dollars for veterinary ER, but the rest of it was all in trash and recycling. Everybody wants to see those bills? Well, the Covanta ones, I guess.
Really looking at transfer station, see what's working.
Oh, okay.
You wanna take the page?
And, um, that's any comfort?
Yeah, I'm gonna do that. Yeah, I'm, oh, yeah, as a side note, Beth, um, our town nurse, we've had a whole, I, I've been here a year, not one call, in the last week, we had three calls about some question about a vaccine and foot and mouth disease, and what was the last one?
Um, someone needed to know how to go about donating diabetic supplies.
So it was weird, in, in like the span of five days, it was like three things for her. Interesting.
Yeah.
But then she probably has a lot of cases of, like, Lyme, really?
Yeah, something just came out, I sent her, said she got it, about uh, in Maven, foodborne illnesses, you guys see that, or if they see the nurse, probably my nurse, but she.
Yeah. If you had done that, I would've been ready to go. How's that, you ready for it?
Yeah.
Anything else? I do.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we got a couple things. One is a septic system that was installed recently, it's one letter per year.
If you could all initial it, one of them, see this one that's got the.
Yeah, we're gonna be looking for you guys to initial it, it's gonna go in the file, the contractor, um, we showed up to do the inspection of the open hole. And where the system was supposed to go was all an old septic system that went right down the ledge, so it was unacceptable to put in a new system, so we found a new location on the site. That appeared to me to be the same material, we dug four feet below it, didn't have water, didn't have ledge, and um, the engineer was there with me, the contractor was there, and we agreed on the location. The contractor felt that the material wasn't quite the same as what it was, it was like a twelve-minute perk, um, and he felt there was rocks, and he wanted to go on record, and um. State that he did not feel the material was the same.
Well, in all fairness, there is no such thing as a warranty or guarantee with a septic system, so. So.
But now, the engineer submitted his as well and said, cause most, most engineers are sitting there as about saying, you know, I didn't see the open hole, or I didn't look at the four feet material, but he was there with me, so I made him take that off as as built. So that, he was definitely saying he did see the material, so, um, but.
Yep. We talked about that. Off like this.
Yeah.
Just the one I wore, was it, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, um, Chairman Pyers was with me, um, for the first open hole, so he saw the hole, they had no dirt in it, and um, yeah.
So what?
Um.
It was so much, it was gonna, I could.
Want to send a show, all three?
No, just one, just the one, please, I'm just gonna put that one on the file.
I, I actually received a call from this installer, and he brought up the same concerns thing, and he said that he was gonna draft this letter, which is here, uh.